All right. Good evening, everyone. June 20th, 2023, 6:33 PM. This mayor and council regular meeting is now called to order. We'll call all council members present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by a motion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Boyd, will you pray for us, please?
Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for another day. Lord, we thank you for the cooler temperatures and the rain that is forthcoming. Lord, we thank you for just all of your many blessings. And we thank you for the opportunity we have to just be able to gather here tonight. And, Lord, just do the business of the city. Lord, I pray that you give us wisdom and guidance on how to lead the city forward. And, Lord, that we would make the right decisions that would benefit all of our citizens. We love you and we thank you for your many blessings. In your name we pray.
Amen. Okay, I do have a few announcements. All of these announcements, the meetings are held in the community room in here unless I say otherwise. Municipal Court, June 21st at 1:00 PM. We have an Independence Day holiday on July 4th. Council work session, July the 6th at 6:30 PM. Main Street Commission Meeting, July the 11th, 8:00 AM. Historic Preservation Meeting, July 11th, 6:00 PM. Social Circle Development Authority Meeting is the July 13th at 3:00 PM, and that's in our City Hall Conference Room. Our next council meeting will be in these chambers on July 18th, 6:30 PM. On our agenda, first item is presentations. Do we have employee introduction recognition?
I was gonna introduce a couple of firefighters.
Good evening. This evening, I have the honor of introducing two of our new firefighters. This is Mr. Jake Mason. He's been with us about three months. Jake, his wife, and his daughter live in Monroe. He's been in public safety since around 2005, having worked with Newton County Sheriff's Office, Newton County Fire, and Morgan County Fire. He'd be coming on, he'd be working with us on today's shift, which is our A-shift, and looking forward to having him and the experience he brings from other agencies to come work in the city.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Told him there was mandatory speech pause. This is Mr. Kaiam Bennett. He's 20, tomorrow will be his 20th birthday, so he messed around and told us that today. So, you know, true firehouse fashion, we'll have to treat him to his birthday in the morning. He's from Covington, he currently works at Newton Fire. He'll be coming on with us part-time, filling our part-time opening. He too will be working on this shift, and we're excited to have him. And the best news I've been able to share in a while is with these two, we are back full.
That's great. Good. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, gentlemen, for willing to serve. Have any others? Downtown rundown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First on my rundown for tonight is our Independence Day celebration. This Saturday, we will host our annual Independence Day celebration, starting with a parade downtown at 6:00 PM. The event will begin at 7:00 PM behind Social Circle High School, with music from the 88ers, free kids activities, various vendors, and lots of food trucks. The fireworks will start at 9:45. Even though it's still summer, we're already making plans for our annual back-to-school celebration on Friday, June, I'm sorry, Friday, July 28th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And that will be at Social Circle Middle School Gym. Holding this event indoors will hopefully give the volunteers and families a reprieve from the heat and help us out in the event of rain. We have many businesses, clubs, churches, and organizations already signed up to offer free treats, games, activities, and various things for kids of all ages as we celebrate the start of a new school year. And last on my list for tonight is Swinging Medallions. On Saturday, August the 12th, we will be closing the street downtown from the Traffic Light to Memorial Drive to host the Swinging Medallions in concert. This will be the first big-name band we have booked for our concert series, and we're super excited. So I'll share more details the closer we get to that event. Amber.
Any questions for Amber? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no one signed up for any citizen's requests. Do we have any council requests? Hearing none, next item, agenda approval, I'll entertain a motion. Motion from Steve, second from Nathan. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We now have a series of public hearings. Way we'll do our public hearings this evening is we'll ask staff or a representative to give the council a summary or an overview of what the zone request is. Then we'll ask the applicant, whoever that may be, and that may even be the city, to come forth and make their presentation. Then open it to the public for comment. Each one in favor would be a total of 10 minutes for comments. Anybody that's opposed will also have 10 minutes for comments, and that's a combined total. But, you know, if somebody takes up that entire 10-minute schedule, then, you know, everybody else will be excluded from that conversation. So with that being said, we'll start off with our first rezone, and it's to rezone from medium-density residential, which is R-15, to general commercial, which is G.C. at 1515 North Cherokee Road, and that's tax parcel SC-120028.
Good evening. The applicant is Jerry Bales, and they are requesting a rezone from medium-density residential, R-15, to general commercial, G.C., to sell and market the property as a commercial property. This property is located off of North Cherokee Road on the north side of the city, and this property has historically been the residence that housed the owners of the business on tax parcel SC-120034. The owner of this property would like to rezone it to market it to interested commercial buyers. It's the intent of the owner to sell this property with tax parcel 120034, since this property provides the access to that tax parcel. This property is on city water and gas and has a septic tank for sewage disposal. The currently adopted future land use map character area for this area is commercial as well, with compatible zoning designations being G.C., MEBP, and Ag. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request to rezone plus or minus .31 acres at 1515 North Cherokee Road, also known as tax parcel SC-120028, from medium-density residential, R-15, to general commercial, G.C., with the following condition: If the properties are not to be combined, a new plat, including an easement granting access to tax parcel SC-120034, must be recorded before any permits of this property, for this property are issued. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the applicant's request to rezone plus or minus .31 acres at 1515 North Cherokee Road, from medium-density, R-15, to general commercial, with the following conditions: The property must be combined with tax parcel SC-120034 with a recorded plat, and as long as 1501 North Cherokee Road, also known as tax parcel 120027, remains in residential in use. A 40-foot-wide vegetated buffer that is 6-foot tall at the time of planting and allows for adequate site distance must be maintained.
Can we go back to Matt for a second? I know we'll have another public hearing, but can you show me where the other parcels is that they're talking about?
Absolutely.
This parcel here is on agriculture and is residential in use. This parcel is on light industrial, and they're trying to rezone this to general commercial. All of this is part of our commercial future land use map.
That's also shown under the exhibits on the staff report as well.
All right, any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? Would you like to step forward, please? Give us your name.
I'm Susan Sykes. I'm the applicant's realtor. The applicant is out of town right now.
Do you have anything to add to what we've heard thus far?
Only that with the idea of this whole corridor becoming commercial, that is the highest and best use in my recommendation for the property, and it would make it more marketable. And we had some confusion in the beginning because we thought that it was already a cohesive zoning right there initially.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll now open the public hearing. We do have one person to sign in to speak for this request, Ms. Regina Davidson.
I've been to the eye doctor right before coming. My eyes are dilated, so I hope I can see. Good evening, and as you said, my name is Regina Davidson. I'm co-owner with my daughter Andrea Reeves of the 1501 North Cherokee Road property. This is her residence. Our property joins the two parcels, 1511 and 1515 North Cherokee Road. They're being recommended for rezoning to general commercial by the Planning Commission. Although we agree with the rezoning request, I wish to restate to this group the concerns we have, which I presented to the Planning Committee on May 25th. Currently, Person 1, 1511, with no documented right-of-way or easement, is accessed by a driveway that crosses our 1501 property. This issue will be resolved if you adopt the Planning Commission's recommended requirement to combine parcels 1511 and 1515 as a condition of rezoning to general commercial. Mr. and Mrs. Bales, the owners of these two parcels, have agreed to combine these properties. This was all discussed at the Planning Commission. Second, our other concerns are that many of the businesses on the extensive list under general commercial zoning would negatively impact the quality of life of my daughter and him. The Planning Commission, I can't even say the word right now.
Conscientiously.
Thank you very much, considered the impact that incompatible businesses would have on an adjacent residence, and recommended an increase in setback of at least 40 feet, an installation of 6-foot-tall evergreens, which Ashley mentioned, as a visual barrier. We concur with these recommendations. Beyond these mitigating actions, we respectfully urge the zoning office and all others involved in recruiting any further future development of 1511 to 1515. Remain cognizant of these issues and ensure minimal impact on our adjacent property. Thank you for your time and consideration of our concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson.
You're welcome.
All right, no one else signed up to speak for this application. Also, we had no one to sign up to speak against. So I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion.
I just want to get the address confirmed. Is it 1511 or 1501?
The address for this property is 1511. 1501 is the property to the south with the house on it.
Oh, okay.
This one's 1515?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, this one is...
Yes, the next is 1511.
Yes, this one is 1515, the next one is 1511.
Thanks.
It's kind of confusing that we have to take them this way, but they were advertised as two separate parcels, although the recommendation of the planning and zoning was to combine the two. So we'll have to hear the two items separately.
And they have separate owners as well, yeah.
No other comments? I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, no motion from Teresa, is there a second?
You will take the recommendation of the Planning Commission?
Yes, with the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion from Teresa, second from Steve, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes on that rezone. Next one up, rezone 2023-002, which is to rezone from agricultural, A.G., to general commercial, G.C. at 1511 North Cherokee Road, tax parcel SC-120034.
The applicant for this one is Ms. Vicki Bales, and the applicant is requesting to rezone from Ag. to general commercial to sell the property and market it as commercial. This property is also located on North Cherokee Road on the north side of the city. It's historically been O'Kelly's Barbecue. Older zoning maps of this property show the property zoned as general commercial. However, staff could not find any minutes or supporting paperwork rezoning it to agriculture, but we've adopted zoning maps that show it as agriculture. Staff is bringing the property through the formal process for an amendment so we can make sure that we get it on the record that this is a commercial property. The owner of this property would like to rezone it to market it to interested commercial buyers. They intend to sell it with the previous parcel, since the property does not have street access without an easement on tax parcel SC-120028. It's on city water and gas and has a septic tank for sewage disposal. It's in the commercial character area of our future land use map. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the applicant's request to rezone plus or minus 1.25 acres at 1511 North Cherokee Road, also known as tax parcel 120034, from agriculture to general commercial with the following conditions: The property must be combined with tax parcel SC-120028 with a recorded plat, as long as 1501 North Cherokee Road, also known as tax parcel 120027, remains residential in use. 40-foot-wide vegetated buffer that is 6-foot tall at the time of planting and allows for adequate site distance must be maintained.
Questions for Ashley? I believe you said the applicant was out of town, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Davidson, you signed up to speak in favor of this one also? Do you want us just to enter the same comments for this? Okay, show those on the record. No one signed up to speak in opposition of this request. So I'll bring it back to, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a discussion or a motion.
Another motion to take the staff recommendation.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second motion from Steve to take Planning and zoning's recommendation, second from Tyson, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So those two parcels are now combined with the buffers as indicated on the record. All right, next up, we have variance number 2023-001, which is a variance from Section 905 to reduce the rear setback from 20 feet to 14.5 feet at 1020 Town Circle, tax parcel NS-13A144.
Yes, Jessica Elder, on behalf of Buy Side Capital Advisors LLC, is requesting a variance to reduce the 20-foot rear setback by 5.5 feet to 14.5 feet to fit a house on this particular lot in Town Park. The required setbacks are 10 feet at the front, 15 feet at the sides, and 20 feet in the rear. The development is a planned unit development that was approved in October of 2002. The preliminary plat was approved within the same month. Because this development is a PUD, the developer must enter into a development agreement with the city. Part of Town Park's development agreement limits the house plans. The developer can choose from five house plans that are included within the development agreement, and another stipulation of this agreement is that all the homes must be built with a sunroom. The developer would like to use the smallest plan available to them, which is the Scottsdale Plan, shown here on this property. However, the required sunroom would encroach on the rear setback by 5.5 feet. According to the site plan shown up here, the house would be placed on the deepest part of the lot, and no other setbacks would be encroached upon. Staff recommends approval of the request for a reduction of the rear setback from 20 feet to 14.5 feet in accordance with Exhibit A, shown below or in your exhibit section. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the variance as presented.
All right, is the applicant here?
I don't believe so.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. We had no one to sign up to speak for this application. We also had no one to speak, sign up to speak against, can't talk this evening, to speak against. So I'll close this public hearing, bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the variance for the decrease in setback.
Second. A motion from Nathan, second from Tyson, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, item number four is consideration of adoption of the proposed Unified Development Code.
I hope you guys aren't sick of seeing me yet. Okay, so just to kind of go back in time a little bit to go over the UDC process, we actually started this back in May of 2022, so this has been going on for over a year now. And we had our first Stakeholder Committee meeting in June 21st of 2022, so almost a year to the day. And then we also had another Stakeholder Committee meeting in August, and then we didn't have another one until March of 2023. We also had some public input sessions. We had Planning Commission review the document on March 28th. We had two public open houses on April 12th, one in the afternoon, one in the evening. We also had two other Planning Commission review sessions in April and May. And then we've also had multiple discussions and reviews with HPC and Tree Board. And we discussed it at several council retreats and work sessions, if you guys remember January, March, and May. And we've gone through, this is our seventh iteration of a public draft, not to mention the iterations before we started showing it to the public. So that's kind of an overview of the process. And this is just a list of our Stakeholders Committee. So we had Rebecca, who's with us tonight from CPL, and Tanya have been a really integral part of this. And then Rich with CPL as well has been to a couple of our stakeholder meetings. Between city officials and staff, myself, the city manager Eric, and Barbara, Jimmy Robinson has been a big part of it, Lester Pittman, Nathan's been on the Stakeholder Committee, Susan, Ken, and Mayor Keener. And then we had the community at large, so we had quite a few different representatives of different facets of our community. So we had Taylor Morris, a realtor, Debbie Smith, who's a realtor. We had Scott Oaks with DPI. We had Ned Butler with Reliant Homes, Scott Gaither, who's our Planning and Corridor Commission Chairman. We also had Tom Brown with HPC, he's their chairman, and Karina Mills, the chairman of the Tree Board. We have Mitch Hubbard, who's a local business owner, Ben Preston with Isanova, Keith Bell, who's also another local business owner, Logan Moss with My Home Communities, and Bruce Verge with IMAC. And then we also had some input from the Northeast Regional Commission and GDOT as well. So we had, I'm gonna kind of go over the changes to the ordinance, and if you guys want to stop at any point and ask questions, feel free. The goal of this process was to modernize, clarify, and simplify the current ordinance proactively instead of reactively. So we're not reactively modifying our ordinance when we get a bunch of development. So the currently adopted zoning ordinance has 14 base zoning designations and four special overlay districts. The proposed draft reduced that to nine base zoning districts and five special or overlay districts. So we have our rural districts, which will be the Conservation District, the Ag. district, which will kind of be the agriculture, what we know as Ag. 2 right now. We also kept R-25, R-15, and RMD. So those are all your residential districts. The non-residential districts is probably where the most change came in. Office institutional stays the same. Business district is a combination of all of our commercial zonings, because they were all pretty similar in use and size and that kind of stuff. And then we're just changing the terminology for what we know now as I-1 and I-2. This is more consistent with other zoning ordinances. It's LI and HI for light industrial and heavy industrial. This was a big topic of discussion when we were going through this process was the planned unit development and what we wanted that to look like moving forward. So we started at five acres in size, but we went up to 10. You have to have a minimum of two separate uses. Then you have to have your overall development standards, and all that has to be included, all those bullets. So you gotta have your permitted and prohibited uses. Basically drafting an ordinance for this property on its own. You also have a minimum of two characteristics. So it has to be a new or unique concept or land use. It has to be a catalyst project, target industry, usable public green space, affordable housing, sustainable certification, or an adaptive reuse. And it has to be two of those. And if you guys remember, we did that kind of polling thing at the retreat, and that's kind of how we came up with this list. And there are some specific development regulations that you have to have in a PUD. You have to have adequate turning rate I and street width for emergency vehicles. So now we'll get into the overlay districts. We have two new ones, the downtown corridor overlay and the traditional neighborhood overlay. So this is the downtown corridor overlay, which mirrors the National Historic District. And this is for any new construction or nonhistoric structures, which they would all fall under historic structures as well. It regulates residential standards, like exterior materials, architectural features, nonresidential standards. It also regulates that for building articulations like projections and blank walls, fenestration, vertical divisions, and roof lines. And it also covers some prohibited uses, like if the referendum passes, pawn shops, liquor stores, you know, that kind of thing we don't want in our downtown area. And just for an example project, the HPC just approved the new Pinnacle Bank Building, so that would fall under this corridor as well. We updated it to add dumpster screening slash location exemptions based on feasibility on the lot. And we also added a zero lot line, so you could build right up on the front property line. And we cross-referenced that in the bulk standards. We also added 100% impervious surface ratio allowed only in this area, because it is already pretty, most of the lots down there take up 100% impervious surface. The traditional neighborhood overlay, it's an opt-in process, so you have to have a petition from the neighborhood in order to even start the application. And by the time it reaches its first public hearing, I believe you have to have 70% of property owners signing that petition before it would go before the first public hearing. And it's just for neighborhood-specific guidelines. So if a bunch of property owners got together and they decided, "We only want homes with garages that are on the side with this particular garage door," they could petition that, and we could create an overlay over that particular area. So it won't show up on the zoning map until somebody comes forward and says, "This is what we want." We also did some use modernization with our use tables, so we just kind of went in and added some more modern uses that have been kind of sweeping the planning and zoning and community development world. We added some design standards to single-family ed- We added some design standards to single-family attached and detached, we added in short-term rentals, Airbnb and VRBO, all that stuff's kind of taking off. We also added in vending machine fulfillment centers like Carvana. We also defined broadly accessory uses for places of worship, so for churches and things like that. We also added in farm winery slash metering and agritourism uses, craft establishments, wireless communications, we added in coffee roasteries, data management or processing centers, and we also added in specifically prohibited uses like vape shops. We also, we added in a use determination process, so we could, it isn't defined by NAICS codes, which is something that other ordinances do, and it really kind of makes it super specific, so there's not a lot of room for wiggling, or if somebody comes with a really unique idea, there's not something that we can say, oh, this fits under that. So we have that determination within the code. We also kept Stanton Springs District to make it consistent with the other jurisdictions that are within it, so we cleared that with, with the lawyer as well for them. And we-
You're talking about JDA's lawyer?
Yes, yes, sorry. We also added solar energy facilities as a special use in Ag and light industrial districts, and we also added in unmanned retail structures, which is like your soda machines, your ice vending machines, donation boxes, things like that. We added industrialized homes from the current ordinance, so it's allowable with supplemental regulations, it only in the Ag District. We also added something in accordance with Senate Bill 213 to allow for replacement of any pre-existing manufactured homes, and we updated the design requirements in Section 3.1.2 to reorganize applicability and add additional standards for residential structures. So that's just some architectural standards to make sure that the quality of residential structures coming into Social Circle is a good one. We also changed the short-term rentals, and we relocated them as an accessory use only, so they can't, somebody can't come in, buy a house, and make it an Airbnb, it's only as an accessory use. And per our last conversation, we added a minimum of two acres per detached ADUs or garden cottage, or the mother-in-law suite, however you want to word it, you have to have a minimum of two acres. For industrial uses, the corridor along Social Circle Parkway has been removed from the zoning map, specific architectural standards have been built into the code for industrial uses. We also removed the prohibition on metal exteriors, instead requiring an 18-inch brick water table and screening. For district regulations, there were changes to the impervious surface ratio. At the Planning Commission public hearing, it was brought to our attention that the ISR was super high, so we just lowered that to be more reflective of, of a, of a city of this size. So the highest impervious surface ratio, I think, is in the, it's gonna be in the business district and the O&amp;I district, that's 75%. So the only place where we'll have 100% is that downtown corridor overlay. And for non-conforming lots of record, we have provisions that afford special considerations for existing lots of record to develop with bulk standards that are proportionate to the size of the lot. We took out anything for single-family attached on deficient lots of record, and only included those provisions for single-family detached, so one single-family home. Procedural updates, we have some ethics guidelines and removal for office, for review bodies. For the review bodies, you can only serve on one review body at a time. And then appointed members, this is a direct quote from the code, appointed members serve at the will of mayor and city council and may be dismissed at any time without cause. So we added that provision in as well. The review and approval process, we spelled those out for each application type, and they're kind of scattered throughout the code, right, currently they're scattered throughout the code and very difficult to follow. So the time periods are kind of unpredictable, so we just kind of put that all in one section of the code, and we clearly defined all those processes. And then we also have a procedure summary table, I think that's on the next slide, so it just defines this decision-making and the recommending body. We also added in community meetings for more intensive rezones to kind of allow neighboring properties to speak directly with a developer to, to kind of let off some steam before it gets to this point. And also, we just clarified that the decisions run with the land, so any rezone or anything like that, or conditions placed on that runs with the land. And we also updated the certificate of appropriateness with a clear outline of procedures, and there's some caveats in there for administrative approval instead of going through that whole process of meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission. So we did, we did an update to reflect the, the language in House Bill 1405 and House Bill 916. There's just some conflicting language in there, so we, we kept both so we could be in compliance. We also addressed the state comments on the Historic Preservation Act to maintain our status of a CLG, so, so we got some comments back from the Historic Preservation Division, and we addressed those comments just about the COA process and, and what gets an administrative COA and what doesn't. So this is that procedure summary table, so if you see, we added in the certificate of appropriateness administrative, and then the certificate of appropriateness with HPC, so HPC is the decision-making body there, and then if it falls under the administrative umbrella, then staff will be the decision-maker. And then we also added in the appeals of any admin decision, what that process looks like as well. The planning process is all done administratively to streamline the process, that's how it's done in a lot of other communities. We also added an update, there's a mandatory HOA required once 75% of units have been conveyed to other owners, for condominiums, it's 80%. There's a potential for an update, we can put it in the code, or we can make it a policy, we can add in the ability to withhold permits until an HOA has been established, and there's a clear timeline within the UDC that, that says you have to do it within 30 days, you have to hold a meeting within 60 days, you have to present the paperwork. I'm not sure if those numbers are exactly correct, but they're pretty close. We also added in some street construction standards. For tree preservation and landscaping, we did the inclusion of a fee in lieu of recompense provisions, we added ongoing maintenance requirements. The Tree Board, their only power really is to hear text amendments and appeals of administrative decisions when it comes to landscape or the tree ordinance part of this, of this code. There's, the big part of this is there's a conversion of tree requirements from canopy cover goal to minimum tree density requirements based on land use, so 100 or 50 inches per acre. There's an emphasis on preservation of specimen trees, preservation counts 1.5 times the caliber inches, removal requires two times caliber inches, so we really want to keep those, those specimen trees. We also added parking lot interior and perimeter landscaping requirements, open space requirements, maintenance and planting standards, transitional buffers as well. And then upon talking with, having like a sit-down roundtable with the Tree Board, we did some more updates to clarify that a survey is, when a tree survey is to be prepared, is to be prepared by an ISA-certified arborist, forester, surveyor, or landscape architect. We struck the ability to relocate trees on a development site, because the survival rate just isn't high. We revised, we revised references to inch requirements to reflect non-residential, which is 100 inches per acre, and residential 50 inches per acre. We revised references to specimen tree replacement to require for every one inch removed, two inches are required to be replaced. We updated to require the minimum tree to be counted toward density requirements is four inches instead of two. We also revised, remove the tree locations in chart, the authority is granted to the city arborists to cite trees based on site requirements of each species, and we removed the tree species list, and we're referencing that separately, so it doesn't have to go through the code process to be updated. Parking regulations have been modernized by offering the following, instead of parking minimums, we have parking maximums now. We have the addition of bike parking, and we took out, I know in the original draft, we had some electric vehicle readiness requirements for parking lots over 30 spaces, we took that out, so that's not required anymore. But we did add in PTV or personal transportation vehicles or golf cart parking, so that's in there as well, as part of the parking maximum. And that's all the updates to the actual code. I know that was a lot.
Any, any questions for Ashley? Mr. Brown, I know that you're in the office or in the audience, did, you had some, I guess, some comments about the state requirements? What's in here, does that satisfy what you were looking at?
Yes, sir, it does. Based on the county government of this state, we got that back on June 6th. Another update was done on the draft of UDC on 13th, and that concluded the changes that the state wanted done, so in compliance with the state act and certified old government. I talked to Ashley this morning to confirm something about the downtown corridor overlay, to make sure that, of the policies, really all or most of the national historic district, I'm sure that we can find the COA and agency requirements for that area, and we got the consent process in the downtown corridor overlay, and we, we talked, and she assured me that, you know, the normal agency process is going to be followed like it would normally. So from what I can tell, I'm very grateful for all the conversations I've had, and looking on the other lines, about getting things where they should be, I think we're okay.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, I will open the public hearing on this and ask if there's anybody here to speak in favor of the Unified Development Code. Seeing none, is there anyone, anyone here to speak against the Unified Development Code? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion.
I, I make the motion to accept the proposed Unified Development Code.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Nathan, a second from Teresa, is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate saying aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Just as a procedural issue, I want to just state for the record that now that this UDC has been approved, that the three moratoriums we had in place will be lifted. No, it was for ware, it was for warehouses, for title ponds, and residential zonings.
Okay, those were through June 30th, is that the expiration date still?
Yeah, for June 30th, or until the UDC was adopted.
Pardon me, just a moment, let me catch up here. All right, next item is consideration of adoption of the zoning map.
Yes, the proposed zoning map reflects the changes that are proposed within the Unified Development Code. Basically, it's just reflecting the consolidation of all of the Ag Districts and the Business Districts, so we'll just have the one red reflecting the business, and the one green reflecting the agricultural, and then we also have the local historic district, the watershed protection, and the downtown corridor overlay included on there. Stop, Planning Commission recommends approval of UDC and the map.
All right, open the public hearing on this one, and is there anybody here to speak in favor of this, of this adoption of the zoning map? Hearing none, anyone here to speak in opposition of the adoption of the zoning map? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
I would like to make a motion to accept and approve the proposed zoning map.
Okay, we have a motion from Teresa, a second from, from Steve, is there any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, our consent agenda, Mr. Tyler, will you go over that for us?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we have seven items on the agenda this evening. We have the, the minutes of the mayor and council meeting on May 16th, 2023, we have the minutes of the mayor and council work session, June 1st, 2023, we have the minutes of the mayor and council executive session that was held on June 1st, 2023, we have the minutes of the mayor and council special call meeting that was held on June the 14th, 2023, we have the minutes of the mayor and council executive session, June 14th, 2023, and we have consideration of the ordinance to reauthorize the chicken ordinance, and I want to say what this is real quick, because this is on there, it's kind of a little bit of a surprise. Back when, in November 22, when we adopted the animal control ordinance that the county asked us to adopt, the portion that allows chickens in the city limits and associated social circle fell off. And so after discussing this with the city attorneys, they, they suggested just go ahead and make it part of the consent agenda, since nothing's changing as far as that goes. It just puts that back in place. And then the, sometimes it's approval of the contract documents for the TAP right-of-way acquisitions. This is for the governance, it's, it's contract documents that governs the right-of-way acquisitions for the, for the project we have going on. Recommend approval.
I would like, ready? I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion from Teresa, a second from Steve, is there any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, next we have unfinished business, which is consideration of a resolution to adopt the 2324 budget.
You said, you said one of you, Robert?
One of you.
Not even pass that out, I'm kidding, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we discussed, you know, pretty, pretty, pretty in-depth over the last several meetings, and nothing's changed, other than one item we did change, and this was after a conversation we had with the district, we had $60,000 in the slot budget for this year to replace the this generator, or this department generator, and first of all, $60,000 for a generator is pretty excessive, especially when you have $30,000 in the same slot budget for a car apartment. And so, and we're also not sure that, that the current generators, it may be working already, the lease has some serious structural issues going on in this building, and so what we're going to do is just change the title of this particular slot project to reclassify this slot project for this department generator and for this department generator and all the other structural projects. Other than that, we are recommending a total budget of $35 million, the mayor, $30,706. This is a 36% increase over the budget of the current fiscal year. The largest amount is for the 50%, for the water fund, and that is largely because of chief projects that we've been talking about for the last several years, and we also have financial increases in the slot, $8.5, $8.5 thousand for free, $40,000, $45,000, again, this is to fight the law, the JPO, and water, and so, making so, just maybe slot money. So we're in good shape with the budget for this year, we are recommending a 2011 election for the budget, and as it currently stands, it is without a increase in the majority. So we're recommending a 10% and that's something we'll be handling once we get the tax ideas in the county.
I'll entertain a motion for my signature on the resolution. I'll make a motion to approve the PUD. A motion from Tyson, second from Steve, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have nothing under new business, I will entertain a motion for executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
Second.
Second.
Motion from Steve, second from Teresa. Further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone, we are now in the executive session.